Interested property owners to increase pollinator friendly habits by promoting pollinator friendly lawn care practices on properties from May the first to twenty twenty-three to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council direct staff not to enforce during the period of May the first to twenty twenty-two-three to May thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, that the portion of section five point two, three point one of bylaw number twenty-two dash zero four six being a bylaw to prescribe standards for the maintenance and the occupancy of property within the township of Leves and the Thousand Islands. That requires all lawns and shrubs be clear of long grass, free from overgrowth and or unsightly conditions. So the motion is on the floor. Comments, questions, queries? Go ahead, Councillor Graham.
Thank you. And to you, your worship, I do see that the township is exempt from that. In other words, the township will continue all its mowing. Am I correct in that assessment there?
CAO is already waiting for that question at the podium. Go ahead.
Thank you, worship, and through you to councillor Gorrell for his excellent question. Yes, the, we will continue to maintain mowing through parks and public spaces so that the public, it won't affect their use and enjoyment. Last year, if you recall, May was quite a heavy growing, grass-growing month. And we were receiving complaints from people for park users and, and that, that it was, it looked unkept and it was affecting people's use and enjoyment. So we'd like to encourage the public, if they are comfortable on their own properties, to refrain from cutting and give the pollinators a chance to get going once they come out from their winter sleep. And we will be maintaining a small patch of grass uncut along the side of one of twelve thirty-three prints just to participate in no mow May, but all our lawns will be looking as wonderful as always.
Thank you.
And just a follow-up question. Did we have any sense anecdotally about how the public received this? It's not impossible to think that one neighbor would not care for the next neighbor in extreme cases. And so I'm just curious, did we have any anecdotal information on? Or was it really directed at the township, what the township was gonna do? Because I don't want ticks in my lawn.
Do your worship. We did have a few phone calls last year and a few people that were not pleased with their neighbor's yard or the state of the yard. Part of that being that we didn't have a formalized approach to the no mow May last year. So we wanted to make sure that we have things in order this year so that if someone does choose to allow their yard to grow because of no mow May, that they're able to do that, and it's not a matter of bylaw enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have councillor Lackey with comment or question. Nope. Okay. Councillor Foddy, I don't know why I had you named there. My apologies.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I was glad to see that this exemption, so to speak, or the tweaking of the township. Driving by this building at least twice daily. You know, the part that struck me last year was our lawn mowing equipment is made for just that. What transpired was we were asking our lawn, lawn mowing equipment do industrial hay mowing. And furthermore, to your comment that last year that May was a good growing hay month, you can rest assured that every agricultural farmer of his worth can attest that the month of May is the best growing hay month every year, unless a drought or copious amounts of rain changes that. But the unique part is the pollinators, and all due respect to our late deputy mayor Gordon Olkey. Keep pollinators pleased. They don't know the boundaries. They will land in the dandy lines over there and, and Smith Field just as quick as they'll land on the township property over here. And that's fine. I mean, I, ourselves at home, we go out of our way not to disturb the bees. And it's not easy to do, but I applaud the township's pivoting in a more logical motion here. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed, that's carried. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is planning report SR dash zero seven zero dash twenty-three, application for zoning bylaw amendment D fourteen twenty-two-three dash zero zero two forty-two Black Snake Lane to permit a sun deck on existing marine facility. The motion comes forward by councillor Maybe and seconded by councillor Foddy. At the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment attached to the report as Exhibit F to rezone the subject property to environmental protection EP-nine to permit the marine facility on the property to include a rooftop sun deck. Discussion on this motion. Go ahead, councillor Graham.
I'd be remiss through you, your worship. I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up, this is one more example of what I've been arguing for previously about going to Committee of Adjustment, establishing the envelope, establishing the size, the envelope, and then coming forward for a zoning amendment. I just want to make it one more time. Thank you very much.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carried. Next item is planning report SR dash zero six eight dash twenty-three, naming a private lane currently two fifteen dash two seventeen Linters Road, proposed name Coyote Lane. Motion comes forward by councillor Foddy, seconded by councillor Maybe. The council, or sorry, the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve Coyote Lane as the name for the private lane that is currently addressed at two fifteen to dash twenty, sorry, two seventeen Linters Road. My apologies. So the motion is on the floor for the renaming of Linters Road to Coyote Lane, the addresses before. There's no hands up, so I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it's carried. Oh my goodness. Okay, next item on the agenda, corporate services report SR dash zero six six dash twenty-three, physician and health team recruitment strategy moved by councillor Jamison. Yes, and seconded by councillor Foddy. At the Committee of the Whole recommends that council direct staff to give consideration to allocating any available twenty-two-three casino funding to the Special Projects Reserve Fund for the purpose of physician and health team recruitment. Now, the Committee of the Whole recommends that council appoint councillor blank to the physician and health team recruitment working group to work with staff and community members on developing and implementing strategies to recruit physicians and or other healthcare workers. So discussion on that motion. Go ahead, councillor Graham.
Through you, your worship. I understand the initiative. What I was concerned about, the wording, consideration to allocating any available twenty-two-three casino funding. It seemed a little too open-ended. And I was wondering if, if it wouldn't be better to leave that portion aside and just establish a committee, appoint perhaps councillor Jamison to put a team together and then let them decide if they need a budget. Rather than the, you know, I have no idea what all available twenty-two-three funding is, but it could be a lot of money. It would strike me. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll recognize the CAO and then I'll go to councillor Foddy.
Uh, thank you, worship through you. The recommendation was written as such to just put up the avenue for funding without an actual amount on it yet. If we were looking for a specific dollar amount, we would be coming back to council. We just wanted to present that this is a possible route for funding that would be used for the, the, the costs of running a recruitment program for advertising or what, whatever. But also to provide incentives. That would be something that we would work on as the working group and come back to council with. It outlined a little bit, there's a lot of municipalities that are out there trying to recruit. And so what we are proposing with the working group is to have a group of, of people consider strategies and what sort of things we should be doing. So for instance, there's, there's no end of types of incentives. There's signing bonuses, there's office rent allowances, housing allowances, relocation allowances, assistant for physician spouses in getting employment, that sort of thing. What we want to do is work as a group that would include medical professionals in our township, stakeholders, and community stakeholders, somebody from council and myself to form a cohesive strategy to go out and try to get noticed and attract recruitment. There, there are citizens up in Sealy's Bay in particular, where there's the Sealy's Bay Medical Centre that are already marshaling their forces to, how can we help? How can we support this endeavor? Because they're looking at a retirement up there. So I, I think we, we, we have to go from an ad hoc kind of approach to having something that is coordinated and comprehensive. And so that's the work of the committee and, you know, you, you're seeing now Kingston, for example, is offering a hundred thousand dollar signing bonuses. Marmara is doing the same with matching funds from their county. Belleville, I think, is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So when you're looking at a new graduate coming out of a medical school or from residency, they're carrying a significant amount of debt for their education and they're looking for, well, how, how can I get some relief on this debt and find a place where I want to live and practice and serve the community? And so there's an awful lot of moving, moving parts for all of this. And there's an awful lot of townships and municipalities out there that are all vying for the attention of a limited pool of candidates who are, are, are out there now looking. Timelines for council. We, we had a meeting this morning. I'd like to thank councillor Jamison, Mayor Smith Gackey, Kate Tindall, and Director of Communications, Community Outreach, Tracy Holland. We've had a couple of meetings with the two physicians in the Sealy's Bay Medical Center to discuss what's going on and what their concerns are. And they've provided an awful lot of help and guidance to us. And Dr. Briggs up there is, has said that she would join our working group and help us. We're also going to look for one of the physicians, or a representation from the St. Lawrence Medical Center here in Lansdowne to also work with us on the community group. And there seems to be some interest on that side as well. So this is kind of the first step for us. Once we have an idea of strategy and costs, we would be back to council and saying, here's what we think we should do, or here's some options and what's council comfortable with. We could, there is room in the Special Projects Reserve Fund. There's, there's money there. What we were, what we would propose with the extra unbudgeted casino money that would come in would be, it would supplement the special reserve fund based on what we would need for the physician recruitment. So we would try to top up the special reserve fund based on draws from the, the working group for the recruitment.
Um, I'm gonna recognize councillor Jamison and then councillor Lackey.
Just to add to what CAO Donakie has said, I mean, or support what he's saying. But I just, just want to mention that, and we've been looking at this. Reason I was on the call this morning and earlier causes, because I've been going to meetings, going all the way back to August to discuss this. So, so that's why I'm sort of the lone wolf at this point. As far as council goes, but in terms of the recommendation and to councillor Gorrell's concern, uh, it does sound a little open-ended, a little early in the game. I, I, because I don't think we're sitting here thinking we're just gonna grab a bunch of money out of the reserve and, and give it away. I think it's, it's the idea that, that in the motion that that direct staff to give consideration to allocating. And that would be part, in my mind, of, of a task force like this to start to look at all the other jurisdictions, see what's going on and see if we can be at all competitive. We have a leg up here in that existing physicians who are here in the community want to work with us to find replacements. That's huge when we are reading about jurisdictions where they just walk away. So we have that leg up. So what is it that we need to do within reason to work with people? So I think in terms of, of the consideration, as that's the first stage, is to get this group together and let's go out and figure out what we can do. And this afternoon or this morning, I think, one of the doctors shared a long list of links to other municipalities and their programs. And so I would encourage us all in the next few days to take a look at that as well. But in the interim, it makes sense to put a group on this because it's, it's coming fast and we want to be there because it includes Lansdowne. It includes, it will touch Gan as well as Sealy's Bay because there are shared services across all of these clinics. So whether it's achievable, I don't know, but we, we gotta go for it, in my view.
Okay, so I have councillor Foddy and then councillor Lackey, or which way, and then councillor Maybe.
Thank you, worship through you. I had the very same question as councillor Girl, but having heard the explanation from councillor Jamison, I'm satisfied with that. If you're looking for another volunteer, I would so be that person. This does interest me. I'm not unique in that I'm another resident of the township that's still here because of medicine. But I have other connections other than that that, that drive me, but I would gladly volunteer for this committee.
Okay, councillor Lackey and then councillor Maybe.
Uh, thank you, worship, and to those who spoke before me that all my questions are pretty much answered, but just to go back to councillor Gorrell's point, I love everything that the CAO has said, but if we could just narrow that down to maybe a paragraph and put in with this as far as, you know, the amounts of money or the explanation of where it could possibly come from. Just the description he gave was great, just way too long to put on paper.
So I have councillor Maybe. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. There's a fellow employee that I work with, and she actually is in Kingston. Out of a practice of seven doctors, five are retiring next month. There's thirteen thousand patients that will not have a doctor. And this is not unique. And having been part of the COVID Centre, listening to the nurses and doctors in that facility, hearing the same thing that a lot of the people who are actually serving and working in that facility had come back to work because there was such a shortage. So this is not unique and certainly it's going to be a serious issue for our whole community as a whole and country if we don't soon get some reimbursement or, or a change in how the methodology. And another story of my cousin years and years ago, who was a doctor in the area. And things started to change when OHIP started changing the basis of their pay rates to the doctors. And he reiterated it way back then. And you can see that coming out with all the doctors presently and how it's changing and where they're moving to, to actually make a wage.
Councillor Gorrell, go ahead.
I would assume that there would be a bylaw coming forward next week to, to write that up. Then I would ask that in that bylaw, let's be a little less vague about the money. A simple statement that's saying it could be funded from Special Projects Reserve Fund. Bingo. Because we always know that we can push money there. So just take away the, the available casino funding, da, da, da. We know where we can put money into a special projects reserve fund as required. That would be my first statement, but I also want to make the comment that in our neighboring township, very close to where I live, a, I'm not even sure what it's technically called. It was a medical facility where you did online medical
Virtual doctor.
Virtual doctor. It was in Mallory Towns. The province shut it down. And what I read in the press, it's because the medical profession was, it was cut in half the money that the doctors were receiving. Now, that's straight out of the, that's, I can't back that up. That was sort of the Toronto Star deal or whatever. So the province has decided that they're gonna close that. I know that organization or I know of it. I know how important it was to that community. And it seemed to me to be so simple. So simple, serving so many people. They didn't have to drive to Brockville. They didn't have to drive to Kingston or Smith Falls. So I get all that. And so I, I'm certainly in support of this sort of thinking. It's just that there are other solutions that the province seems to poo-poo. And I find that it's terrible. We could have that here in Lansdowne. They could reinstitute what was there in, in Mallory Town. And I know a petition was up, but I have very little doubt that the province will close their eyes on that. So thanks for that opportunity.
Okay, so I'm gonna weigh in on this, unless you have something to add, Mr. CAO. So I, along with councillor Jamison, attended this meeting and, and I'll be quite honest, you know, it's, it's a frustrating place to be in as municipal government, mainly because this isn't what we do. This, this isn't what we're supposed to be doing. However, I don't want anybody to think that I don't think it's important, because I do. But we're trying to support these doctors who are doctors above all else. They're business owners, but their main, their main daily job is to heal people, to make them better, to get them the treatment that they need in time to address their concerns. So how, how do you go about marketing a business like that? And especially when the people who are buying that sort of, I don't want to say snake oil. I don't want to make light of the, but they aren't buying, there's not as many buyers out there as sellers. And there's lots of doctors who are looking to get out of their practices, not because they haven't had full practices, but because they're tired and they want to retire. And I absolutely understand that. It is disappointing to me from a provincial government standard that, that we didn't see this coming with the aging population that we have, the demand on our services, both at a, at a basic level of family doctor care versus a provincial hospital, provincially funded hospital. The demands have been exacerbated by COVID. Our healthcare workers are overworked and overtaxed and burnt out due to COVID on top of everything else. Then you throw in the family doctor issue. And there are so many things that could be the deciding factor of whether somebody moves to this area over Renfrew or Marmara or Belleville or Holberg. Everybody's got the same problem. But even if they graduated twenty more doctors out of Queens, they added twenty doctors to that graduating class. That's the seven years out. We're seven years behind this. The, the challenge is, is that if we choose to do nothing, we are at a position of lack. I understand the concerns and I too have those same concerns as far as dollar values. And it's a bit of a circular conversation that we've been having. It's like the committee's like, well, how much can you give us? And it's like, well, how much do you need? And nobody really quite knows. However, the one thing that I do know, based on conversations that we've had at the county level regarding physician recruitment, money isn't always the deciding factor. It's, it's, it's part of the decision, but it isn't always the deciding factor. One of the things that was discussed this morning was about finding jobs for their spouses. Because spousal satisfaction is important. Also, housing. Let's be honest, if you want to buy a house around here right now, it's not easy. So whether it's, we, you know, find an executive home to put them in, that we can find them until they find a house, temporary housing, what have you. And the good news is, is we have some seasonal residents that maybe we could take advantage of. You know, I just put that out there. But the, the difficult thing is, is that these doctors are still trying to be doctors and they're coming to us for help to get the next generation of doctors in to support our population. And as much as it's not our role as municipal government, we're sitting at a point where we have no choice but to help. And we all want to, because we all want to be able to go to the doctor when we need it. And we don't want to be turned away. So I am fortunate and my family is fortunate. We have a doctor here and have had since I was born. And luckily, when I moved to Toronto for the short three-year stint, I never gave it up. And I'm eternally grateful because of that. So with that, the recommendation, I'm gonna read this again, taking into account that we can change the recommendation. If you want to propose amendment, or we can discuss this a little bit further. You know, that the members of council can go to staff to provide some feedback and we can make amendments before we pass it next week as well. So we don't have to rush into this if you want to sit and think about it, but it, the consensus around the table seems to be that everybody is supportive in general of moving this type of support forward. We don't have a dollar value. We don't, and oh, we never really asked. So councillor Jamison, you said you'd like to sit on the committee and councillor Foddy, you said the same? So is it, I, it's a working group, so appoint councillors Foddy and Jamison. Okay, perfect. Unless anybody else had a burning desire. Okay, so I'm gonna read the motion moved by councillor Jamison, seconded by councillor Foddy. The Committee of the Whole recommends that council direct staff to give consideration to allocating any available twenty-two-three casino funding to the Special Projects Reserve Fund for the purpose of physician and healthcare team recruitment. And that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council appoint councillors Foddy and Jamison to the physician and family health team, or to end health team to recruitment, health team recruitment working group to work with staff and community members on developing and implementing strategies to recruit physicians and other health, healthcare workers. Further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carried. Okay, so next item on the agenda. Unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Go ahead, councillor Maybe.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually have three listed here. Not anything I haven't said before. The CN rail flood, any update on that? Broadband, which, you know, there's been some announcements lately, and the four oh one light at number two. Sorry to bring it up again, but I have to keep asking.
At some point in my career as mayor, I hope that I can give you the answers that you want. I sincerely do. Oh, the CAO might have something to add to that. Please go ahead.
Um, just that there has been radio silence on the broadband front. So hopefully, I think we're gonna have another round of AMO coming up on us again in a few months. So take that opportunity to see what we can do about that, but.
Okay, yeah, sorry. So I've got councillor Girl and then councillor Foddy. Oh, unless you have something to add to that?
I think there were two more items on his list.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, I'm gonna let that.
Through you, your worship. The first one, the flooding on County Road thirty-two. I know that the, the county was looking at their requirements for reinstating the road. And I believe they were planning on putting a claim in with CN. Additionally, there was some private property issues there. And we, the mayor and I met with the residents and directed them towards the county. And I, I believe that the intent is to put that in with that claim as well. Regarding the, the light at the four oh one and two, when we put it through to the, the MTO, they did not see that there was a rationale for that at that point. Again, the, the mayor and I had a conversation with the director of MTO Eastern. And they were certainly going to look into the requirements at that intersection. We had indicated our request and, and dismissal of the light. We had also suggested a potential speed reduction on County Road two at that location, because it, it does transition from fifty up to seventy and then in, into eighty at that location. And the additional one was relocation of signs and guide rails and, and those types of things at the intersection to improve visibility. So they were taking that back. Aside from that, we had a, our annual meeting with, with an MTO is, is involved in that. It's the county and MTO, the Parks Commission and several other members. And the representative that was at the meeting, we had indicated our, our concerns with, with the location of the signs. And that was pushed up to the the director of Eastern Region as well. So our our concerns have been have been pushed through. We have not seen any result of that as of yet.
Maybe we can follow up on that, Mr. Holiday, and send a reminder. Just wondering where we're at with that. Okay, so I had Counsel Fode and then Counsel, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Oh, sorry, Counselor Grelle, you had yours up.
I think I'm better under other business rather than unfinished.
So go ahead, Mr. Fode, under unfinished business.
Just further to Counselor Maybe's questions about CN rail. For those who use County Road thirty-four, you'll be glad to see the survey lines are all out. I suspect it's with the intent of leveling out that crossing. Those lines were not there two weeks ago. They're all, the orange paint is there. My wife travels that road frequently and said there has been a lot of activity around there the last couple of weeks. So I suspect that I'm hoping maybe that's what's going to happen.
I can confirm that that county was made aware that they will be, because that was the only crossing in our township that was not addressed last year. So it will be done this year.
If I may, on a on a different subject, the family of Gordon Oki wanna express their deepest thank yous to all the outpouring and the letters and cards and and like that they received, excuse me, and with regards to the signing of the Dolce's books. And I think they were most pleased with the fact of the picture we had taken of Gord. Just, what was it, maybe eight weeks before? In Lorraine's words, it's the best picture we have.
Yes, it was, it is a good picture of him. So any other unfinished business? No, I'm at unfinished business. Any other unfinished business?
There's somebody I know is always saying you can't be angry and smart at the same time, and it's usually me. So I've calmed down reasonably. But I wanna make two comments for the public record based on some of the comments made during the public session. I want it on the video. And it particularly relates to the community groups that took a little bit of a beating. And we know around this table and and for the record, these community groups, whether it's the Sabara Group or LRC or the Rockport Group or Lafer or the, you know, the St. Luke's thrift shop or the group that's around the food bank. They're absolutely critical to the vitality of this community. And to come in and take one or any is, take one apart is taking all of them apart. Not recognizing the hundreds of hours that those people put in and to just simply dismiss them is just beyond the pale for me. Second thing is, on behalf of my absent colleague who was just mentioned, any suggestion that Counselor Oki and I were not properly and duly elected with the full support of the people of the township at an overwhelming return based on the numbers is just not only wrong, it's insulting to the community, not to the incumbents. So that I want on the record, and now I don't feel so bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jameson. Now, Counselor Grelle, you're on other business.
Good, moving ahead. Good. Just three, three items. One, I attended sort of a working, the working group for the Municipal Heritage Committee. The working group. And so this is a reminder of basically two items. Through Staff Report zero three one dash two three, a nicely prepared and presented report from Marnie. Bill, Ontario Bill twenty-three, Better Homes Faster and so on, had some real heavy hitting for the Heritage Protection Act. And it was decided that a working group was necessary. The working group is to be comprised of three people who are not necessarily at public at large. To date, they had one person. Now, they're a very capable group of people, but I just wanted to state publicly in that perhaps the township could put out there that we could use more applications for that. And just a reminder of what it is, Bill C twenty-three puts a lot of pressure on the municipal register, which is the list. And what they wanna do in the big cities, they want to get rid of those lists so that developers can not be held back. So the thin of it is, we have two years to take eighty-one properties that are on the register, I'm gathering, and designate a few the big ones. But the Bill C twenty-three has changed the criteria to make that happen. They've made it more stringent. So rather than being casual, it's now proven. And this is where Marcus Leturno, who is a PhD in this, he expressed to us how much work is involved in that. So the working group is essential, but also perhaps the township is hiring a records management person, I believe, on a part-time basis for transferring of records, I think, onto digital and so on. And I thought perhaps we could give consideration to a few hours here and there to help out with some of the grunt work in looking at these properties that we may want to continue on the designation. And we may need to be in touch with a lot of people. The working group may be able to handle that, but they're gonna need help. It's it struck me as being new to this. It's rather confusing, and I guess if you've been dealing with it for years, it it all makes sense. But Art Shaw was clear to point out that without a doubt, Bill C twenty-three is really putting a huge amount of pressure and almost neutering municipalities in in the way councils go about that register. If you don't do it in two years, it's a five-year moratorium. And to the people on that committee, that struck them as pretty serious business. So again, the two points ahead, we could use two more people in the public for the public positions and perhaps a staff member, a few hours anyway, to help out as the working group may require. My next item was Ministry of Natural Forces, Natural Forces, Natural Resources. Excuse me, that's a Freudian slip. They put out Regulation one sixty-one dash one seven, which dealt with their trying to control public lands underwater. You know, in each province, or at least in Ontario, all land underwater is controlled by the MNRF. So what they wanted to do, they were they were putting forward in this one sixty-one one seven, they were putting forward, they had a number of things about commercial or floating establishments. And what they were, I'll paraphrase, what they wanna prevent is commercialization of floating properties on public waterways, i.e. the Rideau Canal. Well, that would be federal, so they'd have some real problem there. But it could be any of the canals up there that aren't on the, aren't on the Rideau Canal, and it could certainly be this river down here. So the province was putting in place, I could bring it up another time if someone wants to read exactly. But they want to control and make it not possible for people to build hotels, floating hotels. That's a fancy word, but it could apply to one place that is suddenly a Airbnb or whatever. You could take it wherever you want, but they were trying to, they're trying to control it. I think it's a good idea, and I would like a letter of support from this township to the MNRF. It's not our bailiwicket, we can't control it, it's their water or their land underwater, right? But we can offer support to it, and I would like us, the staff, to put forward a letter saying yes, this this township is in full support of what they're trying to do. They can find out as easily as I did what it is they're attempting.
Is that a notice of motion? In order for us to send a letter.
Yeah, sure, no solution, then that the letter of recommendation, letter of sport. Yeah, to MNRF, the force.
Bridge, Regulation one sixty-one?
One sixty-one dash one seven.
Okay, so you can work with the clerk in a in a version of that to come forward, counsel?
Sure, it's pretty straightforward. Sure. And, sir.
That's it?
And no, last item was, the last item, did we come up with a number for the overall tax rate now that the county had come up? Did we come up with that number yet?
Madam Treasurer?
Just a.
In the in the council update as well?
Yeah, I'll just have to pull it up. Again, it was in the council update a couple of weeks ago, so I apologize. I can't remember off the top of my head. I'm tired.
But it's there, is it?
It was, yeah, it was in the council update, I think. Right after the media release came out from the county saying they had passed their budget.
Is, can you pull that up? I've got a mayor's update to do.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can pull it up right now.
Okay, with your indulgence, we'll let the treasurer do that, and then I'll do my mayor's update so we can get out of here. Go ahead, Mr. Maybe.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, a couple of things I wanted to mention was, it's part of other business. The Homeless Veterans Village will be having a groundbreaking ceremony April fourteenth. It happens to be the KPC site, the site that I'm at. Our local representative, MPP, Steve Clark will be there, Mayor Patterson, and a few other dignitaries for this groundbreaking ceremony to actually look after this. Gord was very interested in this particular project also when we were talking about it, so it's you know, going to be happening, and they hope to have it occupied by Christmas time. Secondly, this weekend is Easter, so I wish each and all a happy Easter to to your friends and family, and may we have a great time together post-COVID.
Okay, Mr. Lackey.
Are we on notices of motion yet?
Oh, sorry, yes, we we are on notices of motion. My apologies, I got the one but not bring it back, so go ahead.
I would like to put forth that staff come back to us with options to either support or not support from that courage biosphere, their ask for the twenty twenty-three year for their funding ask.
Okay, so, so the notice of motion, you will craft that along with the clerk in the next day or two? Okay, and then we can speak to ways to address their ask, where are the other? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, any other notices of motion? No other notices of motion. So I'm gonna go to the overall tax rate increase just in four point six percent was the overall tax increase, four point six. Okay? Okay, so this is the mayor's update for Committee of the Whole, April third, twenty twenty-three. Happy Easter to all those who separate, celebrate. Enjoy the time with your loved ones. I know that it's nice to have an extra long weekend, but let's hope that the sun shines and we're able to get outside and enjoy some of that. Excuse me. Our twenty twenty-three communications survey results are in. They are posted on our social media platforms. Thank you very much to each and every one of you who provided valuable feedback. Cemetery grant applications are now open. Cemetery operators are encouraged to complete the application for maintenance improvements and or repair to cemetery. Applications are due on April or by April thirtieth. Calling all property owners on private roads and lanes, the T L T I Private Road Grant for capital improvements is also open for eligible road associations to upgrade their private roads and increase access for emergency vehicles such as fire and ambulance. Applications are due on June the second. And we want to hear from you. The Thousand Islands Wanderer is looking for the best places to visit in T L T I in the town of Ganonakway. Please comment on their most recent Facebook post to share ideas of places that the Wanderer can wander to. And some of my additional notes that I thought of, I was part of a mayor's meeting in city of Kingston. Mayor Patterson had initiated a group of mayors, myself, the mayor from Loyalist, Napanee, South Frontenac, and Ganonakway. So it was really a more of an informal meeting to talk about things that are posing challenges or things that we could potentially work together as solutions. And because we border the city of Kingston and and surround the city of, the town of Ganonakway, obviously, it made sense for us to be there. I learned a few things at that meeting. I believe one of the statistics and our planner was there with me at that particular meeting because we did speak a lot about planning matters, housing developments, that sort of thing. But I think it was South Frontenac that said that seventy percent of their firefighter calls are medical calls. That's a, that's an astounding amount of medical calls and and no disrespect to our firefighters in our township or any other township. But when, when that's an imbalance that our our EMS can't get there in time that and I realized that obviously we're in closer proximity depending on, that speaks to a larger issue. So when that was brought up, it just, it sparks another conversation. So I think meetings such as this are are very valuable, and I really appreciate that Mayor Patterson had the idea to come forward to talk about housing, to talk about emergency services, to talk about water, wastewater. There was a number of things. We even spoke about broadband and to be very transparent, nobody else has heard anything from the province either. So I also wanted to speak to the appointment of our new CEO at the library, Cindy. Sorry, name is lacking on my codes? Sorry, code, I did have that right. So Cindy has been an employee of ours for quite some time, but she is now the new CEO of the library and will be responsible for their operations going forward. And we thank everybody who applied for the position, and we look forward to a long and fruitful relationship. The board has set up along with the CEO. I wanted to acknowledge the passing of Howard Williams, a very important business owner who ran Tyco and down on in Ivy Lee for probably forty years or more. And the reason that I felt it important, I knew Howard and his wife Judy as they went to the same church growing up as as I did, and they were a quiet couple. However, what they did for this community is long lasting. They are one of the main drivers of the St. Lawrence District Medical Center for what it is. They were avid community supporters and and quiet supporters. They were not boastful about that. But Howard, Judy had passed away a number of years ago, and Howard just recently passed, but their legacy and what they've left to community will live on long after they're gone. And it's individuals such as Howard and Judy that are the reason that we have the supports that we have in our communities, and we thank them. Lastly, you might see on our website as of today, we are advertising for a new Director of Corporate Services. As posted, I'm sad to say that we are losing our illustrious treasurer slash Director of Corporate Services to another position, which I will remain private about at this point in time, but just to say that it's been incredible to work with you. You have served this township in a way that we have not seen in a very long time. Your dedication to our asset management process and getting that to that point where we are very reliant on that data, not to mention how we're continuing to collect data and how it will inform us for years to come. I I don't think we could say thanks enough. I know that the new job will provide you with an opportunity to not have to attend these meetings at night and keep you away from your family and also is closer to home for you. So I don't want to speak on behalf of all of us. I'm sure all of you will have something to say to Kate, but from the bottom of our hearts, we thank you for your dedication, your time and your commitment to this township and everything that you've done for us. Yes. uh from the bottom of our hearts, we thank you for your dedication, your time and your commitment to this township and everything that you've done for us. Yes. Now, having said that, I also, I do know where she's going to work, so I, if I need to call her, I will. Um therefore, uh if anybody knows of anybody who is looking for that type of position, it has now been posted on our website as well as AMCTO and another of other municipal government websites. So um thank you once again. And that's all I have to say about that. In which case, I'm moving to adjournment unless there's anything I've missed. Seeing none, motion comes forward from councillor Fode, seconded by councillor Jamison, the committee of will adjourn. All those in favor? All those opposed?